Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting on this September 16th of 2024. Our first order of business, we'll call the meeting to order, and then we'll have our invocation, our pledge of allegiance, so please remain standing for both. Tonight, we have Father Jesus from St. Anthony's to give us our invocation tonight. Father?
Almighty, ever-living God, in whose hands lies every human heart and the rights of peoples, look with favor, we pray, on those who govern with authority, that throughout the whole world, the prosperity of peoples, the assurance of peace, and the harmony and justice be assured through the gift of your Son. We ask this through our Lord Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, God forever and ever. Amen.
I pledge... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic before which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. Thank you. What's your name?
Anthony.
All right. Let the roll call show that all members of the council are present.
So noted.
All right. Next item is item C, our minutes.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve the minutes of the council regular meeting of September 3rd, 2024, as well as accept the minutes of the community service advisory board meeting of July 25th, 2024, and accept the minutes of the planning and zoning meeting of August 1st, 2024, and accept the minutes of the arts and culture meeting of August 6th, 2024, and accept the minutes of the arts and culture special meeting of August 14th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The minutes are approved. Next item is item D, our claims.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims for August 28th through September 10th, 2024, as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Claims are approved. Next is our meeting agenda. I do have one change. I'm going to move our reports, item N, to follow item L1. That one changed for the agenda. Anybody else have any changes? Larry?
Mr. Mayor, no specific change. I just want to remind everyone that item L1 has a public hearing that will be held in conjunction with the item.
Right. It's under the public hearing, but it just doesn't say public hearing, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else? All right. Seeing no changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The agenda is...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I can, just for the benefit of those that may have, may be here for the QT zoning case on McCartney Road, that item was postponed to October 7th at the request of the applicant, so that item will not be held if anyone's here specifically for that this evening.
All right. Thank you, Larry. All right. So that's approved. Next item we have actually is our special presentations, and we do have a couple tonight. First one, in fact, I'll come down, and we can embarrass the person who we're going to embarrass here. Robert Bartson, are you here?
Yeah.
Come on up here. So, Robert's retiring. Are we retiring? Yeah. So, tonight, we recognize and honor Robert, who has retired in the City Department after 29 years' service. 29 years' worth of service. Thanks, Stephen. You don't look that old. He began his career with the City of, in the maintenance department on August of 1995. He was promoted to senior maintenance worker a few years later, and then heavy equipment operator in 2000. Robert spent most of his time with the city as our street sweeper operator. He probably driven every vehicle we have in the maintenance department.
Yeah.
Now, it should come to no surprise that the streets generally need to be swept, and when there is the least amount of traffic, that means that he starts very early in the morning. Like 5:00 every day?
Most people are already sleeping.
Or they're still sleeping. That means that perhaps the biggest adjustment is going to be, can you sleep in in the morning?
No.
All right. There we go. You've heard it here first. That being said, Robert's seen the miles of our streets grow significantly, as Casa Grande has continued to grow, especially over his tenure, and certainly added the challenges of getting the job done. Robert, on behalf of my fellow council members and a grateful city of Casa Grande, congratulations on your retirement.
(applause)
And just because you're retired doesn't mean you need to go away. So, the next award actually we have tonight is from the Arizona, the Arizona Parks and Recreation Association. It's an award that recognizes outstanding program activity, and this particular award is being awarded to the city of Casa Grande and the folks really at Dorothy Powell Center and the, and the activities that you guys all put on. And this particular program, which I just learned tonight, is the Glitz and Glam Senior Program. So, can I have all of the, all the glitz and glam folks up here? And, and I know that we've got Raylene, and Sarah, and Isaac, and the staff. Come on, you guys all come on up here. You're all getting this recognition, so come on up here. So, we have a video, a short video, that we can show you. Stephen, roll the film.
Roll out the red carpet and flash those cameras, because the creme de la creme of the senior set is descended upon the Dorothy Powell Senior Center in Casa Grande tonight. This unforgettable evening, the center transformed into a dazzling extravaganza, where nearly 100 seniors from the surrounding area relive their prom experience in style. For some, this event marked their very first prom, and what a night to remember it was. As attendees made their grand entrance down the red carpet, they were greeted with corsages and boutonnieres by the center staff, who ensured they looked their absolute best. The tables sparkled with linen tablecloths and decorations in shades of silver, gold, and crystal, setting the tone for a night of glamour and sophistication. Guests were treated to a sumptuous spread of food, photo opportunities, and a DJ spinning tunes from Frank Sinatra to Whitney Houston. And no prom would be complete without crowning the king and queen of the night. The city of Casa Grande's mission to improve the lives of the entire community by providing exceptional experiences is truly exemplified through events like this Glitz and Glammer Prom. Congratulations to the Dorothy Powell Senior Center on winning the Outstanding Active Adult Program Award.
Congratulations. Can we, can we get you guys up here? Can you come on up? We gotta get the king and the queen in this picture.
That's so cute.
And all the seniors. Come on, all the seniors. You guys all come on up here.
Yeah.
You're all part of this.
Oh, my God, that's great.
Wearing this shirt on purpose.
(laughing).
Oh, that's so...
Did we get this all in here?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Raylene, on the front.
Yes.
Raylene.
Sir, good afternoon.
Not me.
Just doing a guy's thing, just from the Spanish.
Get this on.
I need to dip.
I'm just...
So, that's why they're wearing it.
The king and the queen.
I think so. I don't know. The entire city council.
Again, congratulations. All right. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. This is item G. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the city council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anybody on council who needs to, like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Sitting, I think I'm sitting on my glasses. Ouch. Anybody from the public want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Yvonne, can I get a roll call vote, please? I almost called you Gloria.
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. Next is item H. This is our public comments section. I do have a couple of speaking requests here tonight, so the first one is Deborah. Are you here? Would you like to approach the podium and please state your name and your address for us and for your records? And please, just as a reminder, please keep your comments to about three minutes, and understand it's not an agendized item, so we can't make any comments about it.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Deborah Sinner. I live at 219 North Sunrise Circle here in Casa Grande, Arizona. I'm here to represent Casa Grande Street Rods this evening, which is at 896 West Hila Bend Highway. About a year ago, the city of Casa Grande paid a visit to all the businesses on the north side of Hila Bend Highway. They informed us that the city had no record whether or not there was city sewage or if they were on septic. So they did a dye test to discover which it was for all the businesses. Well, here about a year now later, we get an audit in the mail, and they said that they are going to back charge us for six years' worth of sewage because they made a mistake and did not charge us. I have contacted some of the other businesses on our street, and four of them have already been contacted by the city with their past dues. I just think that if, as a business, I would call one of my customers and say to them, "After six years, I realize I made a mistake, and you owe me, but I'm not going to charge you interest, but you owe me this money." I think I would find it very unfair, very unethical, and very ridiculous if I did something like that, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jesse? You state your name and your address and...
Jesse Solis, 852 West Hila Bend Highway. I have a business there called Arizona Postery. I've owned that property now for about 18 years, and never once have I charged for the sewer. I was charged for the trash. When I bought the property from the previous owner, he said there was no charge for the sewer. City never charged me, never said anything when I bought the property and took it over. And now, from what I hear from my neighbors, business neighbors there, that they want to charge, and they want to go back six years. I just want to say that I don't think that's fair that they do that. I understand that they want to charge, but they should start from the time they give at least a 30-day notice, which I have not received a 30-day notice of what they're trying to do. It's like me charging the city when they came to do that dye test, they didn't pay me for the water that they ran down the sewer lines. Well, maybe I should go back the year and charge them for the use of my water, is what I think. I mean, it's ridiculous, and I think we shouldn't have to pay anything from the past. If you want to start now, that's fine and dandy.
Thank you. All right. And you don't have to have a speaker card, so if there's anybody else here that would like to address the council on anything, please come forward, state your name, your address, and please keep your comments to three minutes, and again, we, we can't respond because it's not on the agenda.
Hi, thank you this evening. My name is Nancy Wood, and it's 513 East Fackel Road, Casa Grande, Arizona. And I just came before you tonight because it's been a kind of a long summer. We've done a lot of new construction here in Casa Grande, the roads, businesses, and things, and it's good to see, you know, a lot of improvements and things like that. But I need to bring up the, the things that I've been advocating for, which is the burrowing owls, and that they've been really pretty impacted by a lot of the work this summer, in combination with that and the heat that we've had, which is hard on all of us. Anyway, we've had a lot of calls from residents that have seen the owls in danger due to the construction, and I have to say that many of the contractors and such that have been contacted have been very good and helpful with trying to work around those things. And I wanted to just come and say that with as many of the owls that we have throughout the area, that one of the things that, that maybe people could think about is proactively thinking about places for them to stay safely, rather than waiting until there's a construction site and a tractor in front of them, and trying to figure out how to, how to take care of that, where if, if we could get places that had the, the space that, that was suitable, they could be man-made burrows that would be available for the owls to move into, so that when there was construction, they actually had a place to go, and we didn't have to try and take them off and put them someplace else, because they're very adaptable. And places, I think, like Lucid and the mining company, you know, there's been a number of different places where they've put in, you know, habitat that allows them to stay and survive through, and they're, they're very beneficial because of the rodent control and insect control and things that they do without using pesticides and things like that. Plus, you know, they're wonderful little creatures. And so I just wanted to make a public aware that if they ever see any owls that need assistance to be safe, and then think about places like some of the retention areas or your property that might be suitable for habitat, because there are rescues out there that can help, that have the means to supply the, the knowledge and the expertise and people that can help with that. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else?
Good afternoon, council. Brad Workman, 928 North Brown Avenue. I spoke with you guys probably a little over a year ago about the issues we were having with people speeding past the park on Brown Avenue. It's the only street that runs north-south that connects Florence to McMurray. It's a, it was bad then, and we got a little help from the police department, and that tamped it, just, it tamped it down a little bit when they were present, and we were really appreciative for when they came out. The last six months, it's really gotten worse, noticeably worse. I sit out in front of my house, because apparently I'm that type of person now, and on a swing, and watch the world go by, and a lot of times, the world goes by a lot louder and faster than it should. That four-way stop, or sorry, two-way stop that everyone treats as a four-way or a no-way could be addressed, but I, I fear that there's going to be an issue with the children there playing soccer, and we have so many people, so many kids running around, so many people walking the track. I fear it's a safety concern and a public annoyance to me, but I can't even let my kids play outside, out front of my own house, because I have people speeding down the street. That's, I just want to bring that back up, just because of the uptick that I've seen, of, of the issue of speeding. I'd, I'd really think it'd be a wise idea to put in speed mitigation, if not all the way down Brown, but at least around the park, because that's a two-way stop, people will blow through, you know, blow, not blow through it, they don't have a stop sign, but they'll go through it real fast, they go up Brown fast, just, just to be aware of that. The other one is Car McNapp Park itself. It's a, the city invested all that money, redid it, made a beautiful park. It's been destroyed. I don't know if you've walked the grounds recently. We've got busted gates at the skate park, you've got completely covered mural of graffiti now, that we got all those grants for, for the skate park. You've got graffiti on every single light pole going around the park. The main sign to Car McNapp Park had graffiti on it for six weeks before I went and bought a can of spray paint near the same color and covered it. Just to be aware, our, our money's being wasted on, on our parks if we're not keeping our parks nice. That's about all I have. Thank you, council.
Thank you. All right. Just as a reminder to folks too, there's, the city has a program called See, Click, Fix that is free, that you can take pictures and report things to the city. So I'd encourage you to use that system for anything. All right. I don't see anybody else coming forward, so we'll close the public comments section, and we'll go to our ward of contracts, I1.
Yes, I'm first. The staff recommends mayor and council approve an ordinance authorizing the contract with Elliot D. Polak and Company to prepare the affordable housing plan for the city of Casa Grande. The city of Casa Grande advertised a request for qualifications for professional services to prepare, to prepare an affordable housing plan, and we received five proposals. A review committee ranked the proposals and interviewed the top two consultant firms. The review committee is recommending Elliot D. Polak and Company to prepare the Casa Grande Affordable Housing Plan. The housing plan will identify types of housing needed for residents across all income levels, expected employment growth, identify housing initiatives to reduce housing barriers, increase the production of housing for the jurisdiction, conduct community outreach, and create an actual, an action, action plan to implement the initiatives. In addition, Senate Bill 1162 requires that the housing needs assessment will include total population growth projected over the next five years, total job growth projected over the next five years, and the total amount of residential zoned land by single-family and multifamily, and the total need for additional residents to meet the housing need. The city of Casa Grande must adopt the housing plan and commit to the implementation of the plan. The cost of these services will be $106,350. We received a grant for $107,000 from the Arizona Department of Housing to hire the consultant to prepare the plan. The contract with Elliot Polak will be 100% covered with grant funds.
Any questions from anybody?
Just what's the timeline, Mary? How long will it take to get it?
We're hoping it'll be completed in six months, but we have to wait the 30-day cure, so they'll probably get started in November.
Okay. And will this plan then make us compliant with the state law that was passed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We've asked them if they could upfront some of this information quicker for us, so we could get it posted and meet that gap.
When is, when is that due from us?
I think it's like the first week of January.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Mary. Any other comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, then I'll entertain an ordinance number, please. Yvonne?
Ordinance number 3443, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Elliot D. Polak and Company to prepare the affordable housing plan, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of contracts with or purchase orders to Elliot D. Polak and Company.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number 3443 as presented.
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Yvonne, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
And Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. Next is I2. This is Accepting Approval Resolution Number 5695. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council award a contract with Southwest Slurry Seal Incorporated, and this is for the asphalt rock dust palative reinforcement project, which includes Treckle Road, Erica, and Isom Roads, and those are all south of I8 in our undeveloped area, very low-volume roadways, so the, the slurry seal treatment that we're going to be putting down on that roadway is a, an effective treatment that will help extend the useful life of those surfaces out there, out into the future. They're currently a double-chip seal, and this'll be a little smoother surface on top of that, so it'll definitely improve the rideability. We're looking for...
How far down will that go, Kevin, on Treckle?
I'm not sure the exact roadway. It was on the map that was in the...
Houser, okay.
Presentation, so you can take a look at that and see how south, far, far south it goes.
Thank you.
I believe it's one and a half miles.
Okay.
South of Isom.
I...
We did budget $500,000 for this project, and the contract came in at $490,013. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, next is I-2. This is Accepting Approval Resolution Number 5695. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council award a contract with Southwest Slurry Seal Incorporated. And this is for the Asphalt Rock Dust Palative Reinforcement Project, which includes Treckle Road, Erica, and Isom Roads. And those are all south of I-8 in our undeveloped area, very low-volume roadways. So the slurry seal treatment that we're going to be putting down on that roadway is an effective treatment that will help extend the useful life of those surfaces out there, out into the future. They're currently a double-chip seal, and this will be a little smoother surface on top of that. So it'll definitely improve the rideability. We're looking for...
How far down will that go, Kevin, on Treckle?
I'm not sure the exact roadway. It was on the map that was in the presentation, so you can take a look at that and see how far south it goes. Believe it's one and a half miles.
Okay.
South of Isom.
I-8.
We did budget $500,000 for this project, and the contract came in at $490,013. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Council? Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Seeing no questions, then I'll call for a resolution number, please. Yvonne?
Resolution number 5695. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Southwest Slurry Seal, Inc., for the Asphalt Rock Dust Palative Reinforcement Project, authorizing the expenditure of public funds and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Southwest Slurry Seal, Inc.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5695 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Yvonne, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, we'll move to item I-3. This is a development agreement between the city of Casa Grande and Chang Chung.
Yes.
Richard?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Tonight's staff is recommending the adoption of ordinance approving a development agreement between the city of Casa Grande and Chang Chung LLC, and authorizing the city manager to execute the final development agreement and other documents related to the project. The city has been working with Chang Chung to negotiate the final version you have before you tonight for quite some time. In summary, the Chang Chung is, will construct, is agreed to construct and operate approximately 400,000-square-foot manufacturing facility that represents close to $200 million in capital investment, and initially hire up to 50 to 75 employees with plans to expand to 200. In return, the city will be providing limited construction sales tax credits, will support their efforts to apply for an FTZ subzone, and make improvements to Burris Road and Clayton Road, which will also benefit the development of the whole area. As you've driven by there, you've seen some of that construction already underway. Chang Chung represents the first of what we hope will be many new innovative tech companies that will directly support the semiconductor industry that is experiencing tremendous growth in the state, the TSMCs, Intel, and there's several other companies that are looking or have already located in Arizona. This will help diversify our local economy and help attract additional high-tech and supply companies to our community. Fiscal impact of this project is significant. The development agreement requires Chang Chung to complete its first building no later than 12 months from the effective date of this agreement, with an opening for business no later than 18 months from the effective date. And as you've been out there, you've seen that it's well underway, so they should be able to accomplish that. The city, it's important to note, the city incentives are performance-based, which requires Chang Chung to perform through capital investment in Casa Grande and the creation and staffing of new full-time jobs. With that, I will be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Richard?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If I can, I just want to make sure that the mayor and council is aware that Dennis Chen and Manjulavas are here from the applicants this evening. I don't know if there's any specific questions you may have of them. It sounds like this is a straightforward decision, but I wanted to make sure they were recognized.
Yeah, no, welcome.
Thanks. I just have a comment so everybody knows that we've kind of come up with a standard for these things, and you know, Arizona doesn't have a lot of economic development tools. This is one of them, but it's something that we do for all of our major developers and based on employment, based on investment. So it's a very fair thing, and it helps them, helps the city as well. And it's not that we just do it just for them. We look at these for all of our major industrial developments. So it's important that we do this, and also, you know, it's just a good thing to do to help build our city, because when they're making that kind of investment, it's up to us to do our part of it too, just like we do for all the other businesses in town.
Good point.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, just add one particular comment to Councilmember Herman's feedback, and Mr. Wilkie mentioned this as well. These are performance-based incentives that ultimately are tied back to public infrastructure that ultimately will be city ownership or development impact fees, which I think is the key element of the transactions that the city of Casa Grande works on.
Right, so the dollars that we spend go into public infrastructure. Anybody else? Any other comments, questions? And thank you for being here. All right, seeing none, then I'll consider an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 3445. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a development agreement between the city of Casa Grande and Chang Chung, Arizona LLC, authorizing the use and/or expenditure of any funds necessary to satisfy the requirements of the development agreement, and authorizing the city manager to execute the development agreement and other documents reasonably necessary for the purpose of implementing the development agreement.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5696.
No, no. It was changed. It's changed to 3445.
3445.
Sorry, there were two agendas that were sent out, if you didn't...
Ordinance number 3445.
There you go.
As presented.
Second.
I picked the right one. All right, I have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call vote? Yvonne?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. Well, next move to item K. This is Ordnance's Resolutions and Other Business. Item K-1, considering approval of ordinance number 3444. This is accepting a donation of real property from Pirt Road Partners on the southwest corner of O'Neil and Pirt Road. Danny?
Mayor McFarland, members of the council. This is for the property donated from Pirt Road Partners for Parks and Recreation purposes. Staff does recommend acceptance of approximately 12 acres of land generously donated by Pirt Road Partners. The land is south of O'Neil Drive and west of Pirt Road. The land dedication, along with proposed land swap, would assist in meeting the portion of the community services master plan implementation. If you recall, that was adopted back in 2000, summer of 2023, with some different components of recreation south of the community center, which include would-be a dog park, playground area, open space for us to complete. If we don't get the land swap with that, we still could develop some of the land where the current land that is donated. The Pirt Road Partners has been willing to donate to the city at no cost to the city other than the standard closing costs. The donation will allow the city to build parks and recreation facilities in that area without having to purchase any additional land. City staff has been working with both Pirt Road Partners as well as the owner of a property just south of the community center to allow for the land swap, which would ultimately allow the city to own the property for the recreation center. Let's see here. If the council approves acceptance of this donation, city staff will be bringing an additional action at a future council meeting to allow for the land swap. This action is only to accept the land. Any community services development on the land will require council approval along with funding approval. With that, is there any questions?
Questions, anybody?
Danny, how much acreage is it?
12 acres.
12 acres. Over 12 acres, close to 13.
Wonderful.
Yeah, about 12.9, I believe. Yes.
And the idea is that we would actually swap this with the acreage that's just south of the rec center.
Correct.
So this is the first phase of this land swap. So the initial developer is donating this land, and we're going to swap it with another developer so we can get the land that's contiguous to our recreation center.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Danny. All right, any other comments, questions? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 3444. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the donation of real property from Pirt Road Partners LLC at the southwest corner of O'Neil and Pirt Road, and execution of contract and acquisition documents by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 3444 as presented.
Second.
All right, I do want to publicly thank the landowners also for this donation. This is very generous on their part, and definitely will help the city in terms of our parks and rec expansion. And so, I know they're not here, but I do want to publicly thank them, so. All right, I have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call vote, Yvonne?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
And Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next is item L. These are public meetings, public hearings. And the first item on here is a public hearing. It is item L-1. This is considering the approval of resolution number 5697, which is our Community Development Block Grants and Consolidated Performance Evaluation Report.
Staff recommends approval of the program year 2023 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance Report. I know, it's a lot. Evaluation report, CAPER. The CAPER outlines the accomplishments and activities conducted last fiscal year. The city of Casa Grande prepares this report as required by the federal regulations. The report details project accomplishments as well as expenditures through the period of July 1st through July 30th of 2024. The Community Development Block Grant report is to measure what extent the jurisdictions are meeting priority needs, goals, and strategies as outlined in the 2020 through 2025 consolidated plan. This report is due to HUD on September 30th. A 15-day public comment period on the report began on September 1st through September 15th, 2024. A copy of the CAPER was posted online, and a hard copy was also available at the Community Development Office to give the public an opportunity to offer comments. We didn't receive any comments. I just wanted to highlight a few things. Okay. So our total allocation last fiscal year was 462,638. As you hear me say a lot, we have requirements for the public services sector of the grants. We can maximize only 15% can go to public services. So last year, we funded the Opportunity Tree for a supportive aging program for 7,560. They served 19 residents. Seeds of Hope, their Angelus de Esperanza program, we gave them 16,920, and they served 45 clients. Community Action Human Resource Agency for their Casa Grande homeless services, $15,332. They served 52 residents. The Boys and Girls Club, Lankola Club Membership Scholarships, 4,725, and they served 67 children. Against Abuse Housing and Support for Abuse Victims, they received $18,243, and they served 35 women and children. And the Casa Grande Police Department, the Homeless Outreach Team, 6,615, and they reached 37 residents. Also in that, we had infrastructure and public facilities. The Community Development Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Program received $75,000. We completed four projects with the Arizona Department of Housing Funds in conjunction with that, with those funds. Planning and development for code enforcement, they received $69,503, and we estimated about 13,000 residents because of the three different target areas that they serve in Casa Grande. The Opportunity Tree is working on facility improvements. They were installing new windows and an air conditioning unit at their facility down on First Street. That was $38,136. And Public Works, the sidewalk improvement on the west end, $118,000, and that one's still in the design phase. And then planning and administration, 20% max, $92,527 for administration of the program. For the households and persons served, we use this income as data is obtained to determine eligibility for the following services: Cara, City of Casa Grande Owner Occupied Housing Rehab, Seeds of Hope, Boys and Girls Club, the Opportunity Tree, oh, I have Boys and Girls Club twice, sorry, and Against Abuse. Other service eligibility for public infrastructure, homeless intervention and outreach, and code enforcement activities are based on census tract data or limited clientele. So you can see, we serve extremely low income as our highest target area, which we are supposed to be doing. So 156 residents served, low income 52, moderate income is 48. So current projects, of course, the Boys and Girls Club, their after-school program. And I just wanted to highlight another housing rehabilitation project that we had completed. You can see on the very first picture, they had a bathtub with the doors. Gentleman had accessibility issues and could not get into that bathtub. So we tore the bathtub out and then built him a walk-in shower. And then the front of his house, there were three different levels that he had to climb, and he had mobility issues and wasn't able to do that. So you can see from the first picture, there were three different levels. We took all of those levels out, redid his front porch, and then put a wheelchair accessibility ramp in there for him. Any questions?
Nice job, Mary.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? I've been in these houses, and they're like brand-new. I mean, of course, a lot of times, they are brand-new. So it's a good program, especially for some of our more needy part of our community, so thanks for all the work you do.
Thank you.
All right, seeing, this is a public hearing, though, so I will open the floor for any public comments. Is there anybody here who would like to address this issue? This is item L-1. All right, seeing no one, then I'm going to close the public hearing and call for a resolution number, please. Yvonne?
Resolution number 5697. A resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the program year 2023 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve resolution number 5697 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Yvonne, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
And Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, that concludes most of our business tonight. We will do the reports and move them up here after L-1, so I think I'll start over to my right, Bob.
No report, Mayor.
All right, Lisa?
Mayor, I wanted to talk a little bit about the biz outlook. You gave an update at the chamber, biz outlook of all the things that are going on in town. And so, you know, it's just so exciting to drive around and you see all this activity, whether it's in the industrial area, you know, housing. You talked about all the housing that's coming available, and they're starting to rent some of the apartment complexes and some of the retail businesses. You know, Sunday, I just was out doing my errands and stopped at Burlington, stopping out of Sunday at Freddy's, and stopped at Jerry Seiner, of course, is moving up there at the old Sam's Club. I didn't buy a car, but, you know, but it's so nice to have this growth. And, you know, there's, you know, people are always asking about amenities and services and everything, so it's great to see Jersey Mike's has come in. I'm super excited about that, the signs up. I don't know when that's going to happen, but great job updating the community on what's going on. This time of year, of course, there's a lot of activities. You know, it's Hispanic Heritage Month, and so this next month, you're going to see a lot of activities. I was in Eloy this weekend, they had a great Fiesta de Patricio celebration, so it was good to be there with them. And then I went to Almari here, right here in Casa Grande. They had a great fiesta this weekend, was there. And so we have several activities that are going to be here in the city of Casa Grande, so please get on Casa Grande Main Street and the city's website, the celebra. Fiesta is going to be this Friday, so please join us. Everyone says there's nothing to do. Come join us downtown. There's a lot of entertainment and food trucks, pinata, you know, walk, and a lot of activities. So everyone come down on Saturday downtown. So the 9/11 event is going to be Saturday, so that is at Hooper Park. So thank you to Scott McEwen, the school district, and all the volunteers that are going to be participating in that great, great event.
300 people registered.
Yes, 300 people. That's amazing. So, yeah. So, yeah, really, really good. And then, Councilmember Lavender, I know you're going to go on this, but I love going to these, you know, these football games, and it was so great to see the crowd again at Casa Grande Union football game after, you know, the incident. And I just want to thank you again for you and your staff and your players and the parents for being there and being so supportive, and to Casa Grande PD for all of the support. I mean, there were so many police officers there, and, you know, people were just happy to be there and show, you know, our, you know, fans and the other teams. Yeah, and we do behave, and this is just an isolated incident, and we are moving forward. So it was great to be there. And of course, having all the bands, it was band camp day from the junior highs and the kiddie campers, so there were so many people. Casa Grande came out with a big win, and I know Vista Grande won two, and I'm going to try to get to their game next. So, again, thank you for everything. It was just a really good weekend, a lot going on now that we're kind of getting into fall. I don't know if we're ever going to get there, but...
Tomorrow.
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 Right, right.
And then it'll be hot again.
I know. So that's it for me, Mayor.
Anthony?
Mayor McFarland, as well as to our city manager, Larry Raines, on behalf of the Gibson family, I definitely want to thank you all for the proclamation for Claude Roselle Gibson. Surely do appreciate that. We did a presentation at the local church, and so I just want to, on behalf of the family, thank you all so much, and the city, for all the things, the good things said about this longtime citizen of the city of Casa Grande. I know the family was very, they were crying left and right, but they want to be just so thankful for all that you all do. I just want to say, Casa Grande, we always bounce back. There's nothing going to defeat us. We may disagree in some areas, however, we know how to come back together, and that was relatively evident with Casa Grande Cougars. And Vista Grande was out in California, and won that game out in California, so...
Yeah, that's a big deal. Yeah. Matt?
Thanks, Mayor. Just again, on the day of service, also, it's important to register through the city's website or the volunteer website, because they're trying to get a head count for hot dogs for lunch, because you do get a free hot dog. So Mr. McEwen told me, make sure and have everybody register for the hot dog count. And the reason it is moved is because of the victorious, the Vista Grande Spartans were out of town, so they want to make sure that all the high school teams could be included in the day of service, which I think is very cool. And the Biz Outlook Lunch, Mayor did a great job, and he followed his own advice and kept it brief and potent and just right on point. But a neat thing that I learned is that the median income is up in Casa Grande and the median age is down, which are both very good things for attracting new businesses, so that's very good metrics for us.
Yes, it is.
And we did get to go to the ribbon cutting at Jerry Seiner, and eventually Jones Auto Group's going to be out there at the, what we call the old Sam's Club, but now it's the Auto Center, and I would never have imagined what they could do with an old Sam's Club to make, you know, to make car dealerships. It's very nice. I recommend you go out there and buy cars to get the sales tax in Casa Grande. And I want to, we had a youth commission meeting on Saturday, went great. We had a roundtable. I want to thank Superintendent Lavender, City Councilmember Lavender, for participating with the kids. They were concentrating on this roundtable about the education system, and they also had the Principal MSU Prep, Mission Heights Prep, and Cactus Middle School. So it was really great. And also, I want to thank Sol from Danny, Danny and his department, especially Sol, took the kids to the Florence Teen Symposium on Friday, which was inspired by our youth government summit, so they got to go to that, and that was great. And then Melinda came in and covered for me. I had another engagement I had to run to on Saturday, and she helped the kids close up and everything, so I appreciate that, Danny, all your support from your staff. Thank you very much. And after celebra this month is Oktoberfest next month downtown, so on the 19th, and the weekend after that is the youth commission's annual fall shredding day on the 26th at First American Credit Union on Pinale. So mark your calendars and get your papers ready to shred.
Yvonne?
Good. You know, several people have mentioned volunteer things going on, and just a couple things I want to highlight. Congratulations down at Grand Central Station, the artwork and the crop duster artwork that was dedicated, March Chance, Nancy Kaywood, the committee, they have just done an amazing job. The turnout was wonderful. The artwork is beautiful, even at night. Make sure to go down there and take a look at that. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, a lot of people joke about the once-a-year purse auction that hits Casa Grande for the John Hemmings Foundation, and this was a foundation that was started out of necessity, unfortunately, for cancer patients. And this year, they raised over $40,000 in one night, and they've actually raised almost a quarter of a million dollars, and all of the money stays in Casa Grande and the surrounding areas in Pinale County to help with our citizens. And I know, I think that I've had five different individuals that have been able to be helped with care going through. So thank you for the volunteers that put that on every year. And I think that we do have a lot of activities in Casa Grande, but the heart of who we are is what we get back, and the volunteerism and the things that we do, not just as city staff, but as citizens, is so important. So I just encourage over the next couple months that if you have found a place to volunteer, like the mayor's reading program that is this Wednesday, there's plenty to do. So if you need something, let us know, and we'll make sure that we find something for you to do.
Look on our website.
So, what's that?
Look on our website.
Yes, it's on the website. Thank you.
Mr. Lavender?
Anthony and Lisa and Matt took all my talking points away from me. I do want to thank Chief McCory and his department for their outstanding partnership and support for our ballgame on Friday night. We learned a lot from the experience two weeks ago. Chief Keen was very helpful two weeks ago that night. He was also there Friday night to help as well. These lessons learned will hopefully prevent this from ever happening again, and so, but thank you, Chief, both of you, for all your support. The players are looking forward to Saturday. There's 365 that are currently signed up without the football players, so it should be a well-attended event out there. Matt and I really enjoyed working with your youth commission on Saturday morning. These are very impressive students that are going to be great leaders for our community. Mayor, I know you're a competitive person, and so for the next two weeks, Union travels this Friday to Maricopa High School. They are undefeated right now, are averaging about 50 points again, and Vista is also undefeated, and they will be traveling to Desert Sunrise High School next week. So I would call your friend down in Maricopa and do a little wager.
She already owes me.
Combined overall score, I'd feel comfortable you spotting her 40.
Really?
Yep.
Well, I'm not going...
Both our teams are very impressive.
I'm not going to go there, but...
Okay, in two weeks, I'm going to tell you, you should have taken it. Maybe you should be wearing a Casa Grande jersey here in a couple of weeks, but...
She still owes me that one.
Yeah.
Oh, all right. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, Jeff. I just want to bring up a couple of things. On your ballot, the ballots, early ballots will be out on October 9th, so keep an eye out for those in your mailbox. There's going to be a lot of initiatives on the ballot, so please take the time to educate yourself, learn about the initiatives, read the pamphlet that comes with it, the education pamphlet, and really, please, take a look at it. I especially ask you to look at Proposition 486. It is a renewal of a road tax that we've been paying for about 40 years. The city of Casa Grande receives, we received over the last 20 years, which was the last renewal period, we received over $45 million from that fund, and that is used on your Florence Boulevard that we just redid. It's used in the neighborhoods that we totally redo. So those dollars all have to be spent on roads, so it's important to please take a look at it. It's Prop 486. Educate yourself on it, and if you want to ask me how I'm going to vote, see me after the meeting. Am I safe there?
All right.
Also, just a little transit update. Effective Saturday, November 2nd, we will begin Saturday's service on our CG links. So if you were wondering when that was going to come out, well, I've just answered your question, so you'll be able to call up CG links and ride the CG links from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, which is the normal hours that we do Monday through Friday, and that will begin Saturday, November 2nd, so keep an eye out for that. And also, I want to remind folks, if you haven't signed up, and I mentioned this earlier, there's two apps that I would put on your phone. One is See Click Fix, and then look up Casa Grande and have it set on your phone for Casa Grande, and if you see graffiti, you see something, a piece of furniture that's on the side of a road, you take a picture of it, you send it to us, and we will pick it up. We will take care of it. If you see something on a light pole and it's graffiti in the park, take a picture of it, it geocodes the location, and we will come fix it. Okay, so it's a great program. If you have not, put that on your phone, See Click Fix. The other one is the CG Alerts. And CG Alerts, you can find all these on our website. If you, especially the CG Alerts, put it on your phone, or not, just put it on your phone. You have to sign up for it. It's an opt-in program, and so you opt in, you say, okay, I want you to text me, or I want you to email me, or I want you to call me, or I want you to do all three. It can do all three, and the closures, like for example, where construction is going to begin this week down at Florence and Pirt. So be aware, we're extending the turn lanes. They'll start with the Pirt turn lanes and then move to the Florence turn lanes. We're making them longer to avoid backups into the through lanes, but that's the kind of alert you'll get. It sends you a text and it says, hey, look for delays on Pirt starting this date, and if you want more information, click this link, and it'll give you the whole story. So those are the kinds of things that we do, and if you sign up for it, I guarantee you, you will not be disappointed. I think that's about all I've got for tonight. So thank you, everybody. Anything else from council? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're going to go into executive session. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Good night.